Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of February 28th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Arius. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Councilmember Smith lead us in the invocation. But following the invocation, we will have Cheyenne Coronado, who's a junior at Independence High School, who will lead us in the pledge. Cheyenne is currently serving as the Independence High FFA Future Farmers of America President, the South Valley Section President, and was recently announced as the San Joaquin Region President for 2024. She placed in the top four of the state 2023, impromptu speaking. So thank you and congratulations. And her advisor also joins her here today. Would you all please stand?
Father God, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this opportunity to serve. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your understanding, your love, and your peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Fellow members and guests, please join me in a salute to our flag. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. You're welcome to leave at this point. Go study. Thank you, Cheyenne. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations for A, Proclamation to the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition, declaring Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Bakersfield during February 2024.
The safely surrendered baby law was first enacted in 2001, and the law helps to decrease the number of newborn infants, their deaths statewide due to abandonment in very unsafe locations. And we are just so grateful for our local coalition and its dedicated efforts to increase public awareness about the safely surrendered baby law and help give parents safer options in surrendering their babies. It's my honor to read this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed February 2024 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in our city in recognition of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition and its efforts to provide a safe alternative for newborn babies to safely be surrendered, in recognition of the partnership of government nonprofit organizations, private businesses, and residents that are committed to providing places of sanctuary for these babies, in recognition of the need to heighten public awareness regarding this issue, and the need to provide a safe refuge for the innocent newborns involved, in recognition of the three infants safely surrendered in 2023, and in recognition of the 98 precious infants safely surrendered since the program's inception in Kern County in 2008. And it is dated this day, this 20th day of February. It's my pleasure to present this to Erin Rogers from the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, and she's going to introduce herself and her guests.
Thank you. It is our pleasure to be here. My name is Erin Rogers. I'm with the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center. This is Wanda Brown, and she is with Kern County Public Health. And we just appreciate this proclamation. For us, a win is that we have had three years with no babies abandoned. And so we know how important it is when a woman is in a crisis situation and she cannot care for her baby at the time of birth. This law allows her to safely surrender that baby within 72 hours of birth, and she has 14 days of cooling off to be reunited with her baby. At the 15th day, if she has chosen to stay away, her baby is placed for adoption. And I personally have some very dear friends who have a safely surrendered baby, who is now 11 years old and a very active and very competitive baseball player. And Ally and Anthony Davis are great members of our community who welcomed a safely surrendered little boy into their home. So I know what a difference personally this law makes. Thank you to the City Council for recognizing that.
Thank you. To echo Erin's sentiments, we are very proud that we have this proclamation, and it's going to help so much, so many people here in Kern County that need it. Just no name, no blame, we're good. So yes, thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations for B, Retirement Presentation to David Lyman, Convention and Visitors Bureau Manager for nearly 40 years of service to the City of Bakersfield.
The year was 1984. Ghostbusters top box offices, neon colors, parachute pants, giant shoulder pads, workout wear, and oversized hair were the top fashion trends. Singer Prince was at the top of the charts with hits like "Let's Go Crazy" and "When Doves Cry." And David Lyman was officially hired by the City of Bakersfield as a temporary planning technician. Since then, he's gone on to hold other positions in our organization, with the most recent being our Convention and Visitors Bureau Manager. Now, here we are, almost 40 years later, and David has become one of our most integral city employees. He's been described as being passionate about the city, always happy to help others, and a mentor instrumental in the growth of those who worked with him. David also has been a frequent presenter at the local and state levels discussing economic impacts of travel and tourism in Bakersfield. I've also relied on him, along with my assistant Danielle, for his exceptional knowledge of history and fun facts about Bakersfield. David has represented the city with integrity and professionalism. We're so thankful for his decades of committed service to the city and to the residents of Bakersfield. David Lyman, would you please join me up here, along with Mr. Christian Clegg? First, may I present this to you? Why don't you stand here, since you're the important one, right there? Presented to David Lyman in honor of nearly 40 years of dedicated service to the City of Bakersfield in recognition of your stewardship of travel and tourism in Bakersfield, in recognition of your outstanding leadership and community engagement, and in recognition of your resolute commitment to the advancement of the City of Bakersfield. Congratulations, best wishes on your retirement. Just so proud of you. And Mr. Clegg's going to offer some remarks, but I also think that it would be appropriate to... This doesn't happen very often. Forty years is a long time to be serving in the City of Bakersfield. It's my honor to be able to present you with the Mayor's Medal.
Oh, thank you.
Before you speak, Mr. Clegg has some words.
I would just add to the reflections of the mayor that David has many accolades. He's an exceptional public servant who cares deeply about this community and always tries for excellence. One note that I continue to point out to others is that recently, the California Economic Development Association reached its 40-year anniversary, and they wanted to recognize 40 individuals that during their 40-year history who had made the biggest contribution in the entire state to economic development of the state. And one of those was our very own Bakersfield's David Lyman, was amongst those 40 individuals most influential in economic development in our state over that 40-year period. But more important to me again is that not only is he a consummate professional, but a true public servant who cares deeply about this community. Thank you, David.
Got to stop crying. Mayor, Mr. Clegg, council members, good evening. Yes, they said it would never happen, but it has. I have retired. Now, you know what that means for me, but what does it mean for you? Well, I will not be here for my annual budget presentation later this spring, so what I've decided to do is just take those 15 minutes and use them here. I have served under five city managers and six mayors. What many of you may not know is that I have a high school yearbook photo of our current mayor in my own high school yearbook. Ah, little bit of fun facts. Because I've worked here for almost 40 years, the math wizards can figure out I am a child of the '60s and the '70s, and I was and remain very idealistic. We were going to change the world, and the way I was going to change the world was to be an elected official. I was going to have your job. But once I started the City of Bakersfield, your predecessors quickly disabused me of that idea because I rapidly found out that I do not have the temperament for what you do. I did, however, find a passion for being on this side of the dais and making positive change in my community. I had some tremendous opportunities to represent the City of Bakersfield at the state, regional, and national levels, and many people do not get paid to promote their own hometown. And I want to say that I just wasn't paid. The City of Bakersfield made an investment in me. They invested in my education. They paid for me to attend the three-year Economic Development Institute, the University of Oklahoma. They paid for my master's degree in public administration at Cal State Bakersfield. They gave me a three-year leave of absence to continue to pursue my graduate education. I came back with a second master's degree and a PhD. When you make that investment, I think you're looking for a return, and I'd like to think that I provided a positive return on your investment, both for myself and the community. In closing, I'd like to acknowledge a few people. First of all, my colleagues, your members of your workforce that are here throughout the audience, here, here. You have a tremendous workforce, and I am so pleased and honored to have served with them during my time here. I'd like to acknowledge a few people. First of all, the crew that I most recently worked with, the Crew at Visit Bakersfield, Matt Billingsley, Andrea Morrow Keane, Evangelina Medina, and Tyann Borsky, the Visit Bakersfield Board of Directors, some of whom are here, and the fellow in the teal shirt way in the back, Alan Blominy, who I've been with for more than 40 years. He's given me lots of love and support, and for which it's always been appreciated, and helped me make it from temporary planning tech to division manager at all points in between. So thank you again for your recognition this evening. And this, it's all very heady stuff for this Eastside boy from Myra A. Noble School and Washington Junior High School, and thanks to the City of Bakersfield for helping me be able to change my little part of the world. Thank you.
Well-deserved recognition, 40 years of dedicated service. Thank you so much, David. In keeping with the council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here on hearing item 9A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council cannot take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received no speaker cards for items listed on this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Yes, we have received eight speaker cards.
Would you go ahead and call those, please?
The first speaker will be Terry Maxwell.
Is that last in, first up, I guess? My name's Terry Maxwell, and I am a little concerned about the 24th Street mess that we've got going on. Couple things. I just tried to take a left-hand turn, headed east on 24th Street on the beach. Took me over 10 minutes to make that left-hand turn. Level of service would probably be an F+. Would like to see something done about that during the peak hour traffic. The ability to make that left-hand turn is very dangerous. People don't know how much time it's going to take for them to get across there. Traffic is coming at you pretty fast. People make bad judgment calls. I've talked to people in the neighborhood, and they've heard of many accidents at that particular corner. I think somebody needs to look into that and maybe put a light there so that when you're in 5 o'clock traffic, and it's appropriate that the traffic taking that left-hand turn can do so safely under a light as opposed to taking the risk they're taking. The other thing I'd say about 24th Street, you know, we were promised that that landscaping is going to be absolutely gorgeous, wonderful, lots of trees. You know how many trees are left in the median? I think two. There are hardly any trees there at all, and the trees that you put up usually get kicked over by some vagrants that feel like, hey, this is a good idea, let's kick this over. I think 24th Street, we were promised a lot of things that was going to happen. It's going to improve things, and you know, it's really not improved hardly anything. We'd like to see those kind of things taken care of. And it's been two years since I warned you about that narrowing as you're headed west at about A Street, where you're going from four lanes to three lanes. The furthest lane to the right is eliminated, and the lane to the left of that immediately pulls straight in front of that particular lane. There had been several accidents there also, and I've warned you about that. So if any of those people who actually had accidents had any injuries, you'd be liable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Councilmember Arius, Vice Mayor. Clerks, I don't see the request to speak, so if you can just check that. Audience, we're dealing with some new technology here, so please pardon the growing pains. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Straklous, would you please reach out to Mr. Maxwell to identify the specific concerns related to the left turn on Beach Street? And I'd like to follow up with you as well so that we can find some remedy to the situation there on 24th. And then also, I mean, I would agree in terms of the landscaping on 24th Street. I think we did, as a city, look towards 24th Street as a gateway project for downtown Bakersfield, and it is lacking. And I think we need to address the issue. I know there was some issues related to the contractor, and it was the contractor's responsibility for a certain period of time, but now that that contract period has expired, I think it's important for us to revisit that and have a better plan to address landscaping needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we call the public speaker, would you just test your request to speak, please? Yeah. Okay, there we go. All right, now it works. Thank you. Right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker or the next speaker?
Gabriella Moda, followed by Gassan Kaffini, and then Bassan.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself, and would you please lower the mic?
My time hasn't started. Hi, my name is Gabriella Monta. I was here the last two meetings, and I'd like to repeat some of my sentiments. As a combat veteran, deeply committed to the principle of Ahimsa, the Sanskrit term for nonviolence, my experiences have not only shown me the ravages of war, but have also strengthened my resolve for peace and the protection of all beings. My stance is rooted in a profound belief that violence is not the answer. The laws of war, while necessary, are not a justification for conflict, but rather a last resort to mitigate its horrors. Today, I stand before you to address the dire situation in Gaza, where recent reports have painted a harrowing picture of human suffering and destruction. The United Nations and various other humanitarian organizations have highlighted this crisis of unprecedented scale. We've heard the numbers. It's over like 40,000 deaths. It's ridiculous. Majority of them are women and children and newborns. The infrastructure damage in Gaza is catastrophic. It's more than street lights and trees, y'all, with over half of the homes destroyed or severely damaged, and essential services like hospitals and schools are in ruins. The blockade has led to a humanitarian disaster, to put it lightly, with the entire population facing food insecurity, indicating a near total collapse of basic services. Every single person is trying to find food, struggling to find food and water. Our silence, your silence, in the face of these atrocities does not align with the values of Bakersfield City or my value of Ahimsa. Maybe some of y'all have that value of nonviolence, too. I don't know. But it certainly doesn't reflect the principles of justice, humanity, or peace that our community does stand for, that you guys are supposed to stand for. It's crucial that we raise our voices against this violence and take concrete steps to support the people of Gaza. Karen Go, it is shameful that you and the council members have celebrated a safe surrender proclamation for infants when you remain silent, complicit in the middle in the murder of mothers, newborns, and unborn babies in Gaza. Why are you selective about which babies deserve your solidarity? I request from everyone in this room to raise your hand or stand if you condemn the murder of Palestinians, women, and children.
You're disrupting the meeting because you have gone over.
Please stand now if you condemn the killing of Palestinians. Please stand or raise your hand proudly if you condemn the killing of Palestinian civilians, newborns, and mothers.
Audience, we have a two-minute time limit. We're here to listen to you. We want to listen to your comments, but we're going to be respectful of each other. So two minutes, and we'll have the next speaker, please.
Gassan Kaffini.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
So my name is Gassan Kanafani, and I'm a Palestinian Muslim constituent of Bakersfield. We've heard repeatedly that there's not much the City Council can do to affect international policy, address Palestine, or what's going on in Gaza. And yet, Bakersfield has a long history of direct financial, material, and military support for Israel. The Rudnick family of Bakersfield have a long and storied history in our city, particularly with aviation, with Eleanor Rudnick being the woman who founded what became the Bakersfield Municipal Airport. Eleanor Rudnick is also the woman responsible for training the first Israeli fighter pilots, who, after training right here in Bakersfield, flew to Palestine to participate in the original ethnic cleansing of my people, Al-Nakba, in 1948, which saw nearly 600 Palestinian towns and cities completely eradicated and cleansed of their native Palestinian populations, just as we're seeing happen today in Gaza. This is the legacy of Bakersfield, and it continues to this day with citizens of Bakersfield who are fighting overseas to participate in the ongoing genocide. I am beyond the niceties of saying that I hope this never happens to you, because it seems that for anybody here to care, they would only care if it happened to them. So I hope that one day, you might have to endure the complete erasure of everything you've ever known. The slaughter of your friends and family, the dehumanization of your people, as your cries fall on deaf ears unwilling to do so much as even mutter a single word in feigned support. As you saw as disruptive recently, you have not begun to see disruptive. Free Palestine from the river to the sea, all support to armed resistance against the forces of fascism in Israel and Zionism wherever they are, and may the Zionist settler colony of Israel one day burn.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bassan, followed by Lorena Salinas.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Two weeks ago, I came and spoke under the name of Bassan Aouda. Bassan is a 24-year-old journalist reporting the horrific atrocities happening to her own people in Gaza. She is documenting a live genocide, and this voice memo was from Bassan two weeks ago. Is this to Egypt, to the north of Egypt, to Sinai Desert? We will just die. We will die. I don't know why do you guys are watching without doing anything to end this? Just end it. Just stop it. Stop it. Stop it. In any price, stop it. In any cost, stop it. Just stop it for anything. Just stop this. It's a nightmare. I can't continue just thinking about displacement more and more. It's nightmare, and I can't, I can't keep it. I can't keep it. I can't keep alive while thinking of being displaced more and more. I just want to go back to my home. She is pleading to you to stop it, and I am now pleading to you to stop it. Let me describe to you one of the worst feelings during war. Before a bomb drops, it makes the whistle sound as it's falling from the sky. It sounds so close and loud, it is the most terrifying, because you don't know if it's going to fall on you. So you stand there confused. Do I run? Do I sit? Is it going to fall on me? Will I be in pieces? Am I going to die immediately? Will I lose all my limbs? What about my family? What do I do? And where do I go? You feel so helpless at that moment. I can't fully convey the feeling. It's been nine years, and I still dream about the bombs, and that same feeling of hopelessness comes to my dreams. Why is our blood so cheap to you? Why do we all have to beg for a ceasefire as if the Palestinians are not worth living? They're more deserving of life than everyone refusing to pass for a ceasefire in this room. I am out of words, and I don't know what else I can say to touch your hearts. I demand a call for a ceasefire. I am Bassan Aouda, and just stop it. I request from everyone in this room to raise their hand if they condemn the murders of Palestinian men, women, and children.
Thank you. Your time is up. Just so you all know, listen, the council does not engage in raising hands for any topic. So just so that you're aware of that, we don't respond, and that is not appropriate. Next speaker, please.
Lorena Salinas.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello again, City Council. My name is Lorena Salinas, and I stand before you with a heavy heart to let you know that in just these past 24 hours, six children have died and seven more are in critical condition, not just because of the bombing, but because of the forced starvation that is being imposed on them by the IOF. And I'm here to ask, if those were your children, would you still be just as silent as now? Or do they have to be safely surrendered for you to care? If it was your homes that were being destroyed by constant airstrikes, would you be just as silent? Or would you... maybe you will listen to the final words of this brave soldier, which were "Free Palestine." Week after week, you say that you don't have time to deal with this foreign policy stuff, but Karen Go seems to have plenty of time to make Instagram reels and throw money around with the rich to be relatable on social media? I don't know what that is. You guys seem to have time to celebrate the opening of a corridor that only goes from west to east, giving access to the rich part of town to the rest of the city, but conveniently, not from east to west, which would do the opposite, give the poor side of town access to the rest of the city. We don't want your fake reliability. We don't want your fake support. I don't know what it is that you guys are doing with those videos. We want a city council that we can actually trust to have our best interests at heart. And as your constituents, we need to know that you stand for justice over profit. So I ask everyone in this room to please raise your hands if you condemn the murder of Palestinian men, women, and children. Come on. Eric, Ken, Bob, Karen.
And again, just a reminder.
Andre, Bruce, Patty, any of you guys condemn murder? No?
Just a reminder, the council does not engage like that with the audience. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Motaz.
My name is Motaz, and I'm a Muslim Palestinian constituent of Bakersfield. I have a scenario for all of you. Imagine you're at home with your loved ones, enjoying a quiet evening together, when an armed -- an armed individual storm in, claiming that your home belonged to them 2,000 years ago. Despite your rightful ownership and the fact that you built your home with your own two hands, they force you out, leaving you helpless as they kill your family and take everything that you own. Devastated, confused, and angry, you're forced to seek refuge in a cramped camp with thousands of others who just experienced similar injustices. But your suffering doesn't end there. The group that took your home returns and surrounds your camp with a 30-foot wall, cutting you off from water, food, electricity, and denying anyone from entering the camp, or further stripping you from your freedom and humanity. In a desperate attempt to survive, you resort to building underground tunnels to smuggle in basic necessities for you and your community. With each passing day, the weight of your losses and the struggle to rebuild your life grows heavier and heavier. Tragedy strikes again when an Israeli missile destroys a shelter that you and your family had sought refuge in, shattering any remaining hope of peace or stability. Imagine the feelings you'd have after losing everything you hold dear, the pain of witnessing senseless destruction of your home and the lives of your loved ones. How would you cope with this overwhelming injustices? I know for a fact that none of you would ever be able to handle living outside of your privileged lives in this country, but this is the harsh reality for the Palestinians in Gaza. For the last 142 days, the fathers, the mothers, and the children of Gaza have changed what it means to be called a hero. They've set the bar higher than any of us could ever reach, and they continue proving to the world that Palestinians will never be defeated, that we would rather die standing defiantly against a terrorist occupying Israeli diaper forces and all those who choose to ally themselves with this fascist regime. Karen, last city council meeting, and repeatedly you keep telling us that we act inappropriately. How the hell do you expect us to react when all of you refuse to condemn the killing of our family and our friends? This is just the start of it. You have not seen inappropriate yet. Palestinians will continue mobilizing around the world, and victory will be ours by any means necessary. And as Palestinians are remembered for their resistance, courage, and bravery, you city council members will be remembered as cowards until you condemn Israel and denounce your -- and you call for a ceasefire.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Matt Burnham.
I'm a former cadet of the Air Force Academy, and I am autistic. And like Greta Thunberg, I have mutism, which means I only speak when truly necessary. And now is not one of those times, because the words have already been said by Aaron Bushnell. And I would invite everyone in the room to raise their hand if they condemn the murder of Palestinian people. Well, I yield to Aaron Bushnell.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Next speaker, please.
Martin Hegera.
Please introduce yourself.
Now that the International Court of Justice has found that there is a plausible case of genocide, that the Israeli occupation forces are currently escalating in the Gaza Strip, what do you have to say for yourselves? Will most of you continue to remain silent and confirm that you're all genocide deniers? Hundreds of letters from people all across Bakersfield have been sent to the city council members demanding that they introduce and pass a resolution calling for a permanent ceasefire to the relentless terrorist bombing campaign being funded by U.S. taxpayer dollars. It has been 35 days since multiple community members first came here to ask that you all do the bare minimum to stand with the Palestinians in our community that have been asking you to for five weeks now, long before that. And in these five weeks, each of you have continued to refuse, except Manpreet Kaur, to do anything at all. So in this case, your continued silence, after given multiple opportunities to easily use your influence to speak out and uplift our Palestinian community, makes you even more complicit in this genocide actively, again, being carried out by our tax dollars. Horrifically, a U.S. active-duty airman who you just listened to burned to death recently became the second person to pour gasoline everywhere on their body and set themselves on fire to protest the genocide of Palestinians, since it has been escalating for several months. This man, Aaron Bushnell, who graduated at the top of his class and had been moving up the ranks since entering the United States Air Force, is being smeared as just another broken, crazy person you should disregard.
Mr. Hegera.
But the people aren't going to let that happen, just how we're not going to let you all act like Palestine isn't a Bakersfield issue.
Mr. Hegera, your time is up. Please bring your comments to a close.
Andre Gonzalez, if you or any other coward you rub elbows with still think this, you will soon realize that you're dead wrong.
Mr. Hegera, your time is up. Please end your comments.
Listen to the community introduce and pass a permanent ceasefire resolution.
Next speaker, please.
Novi McClanahan.
My name is Luke McClanahan. I was raised and born here, went to Independence High School, and have served my community since I was a child. I don't know if you remember me, Karen Go, but I was in your call center when you were promoting in 2016 for your current position. I was there. I don't know if you remember me, Andre Gonzalez, for the MLK Initiative, while I was there. I am highly disappointed in all of you sitting here. You say you care about people. There are innocent children, men, and women dying, and you have done nothing. You have said nothing. You can sit here and look at your -- all your computers and look emotionless. There are people dying. They have no food. They have no water. They have no medical engine. They're starving and asking everyone for help, and you sit there and do nothing. How can you soulless people do that? You are -- I don't care if this is Bakersfield. You are a human. You share the same flesh and blood as everyone in this room. It is your human obligation to see, when you see something wrong that is happening, to say something about it. It's your obligation, Andre. I am highly disappointed in you. You have been in my home. You have been in my home. My mother counts you as a friend. I hope she no longer does. You say we don't have time for foreign policy stuff? It's not foreign policy stuff. People are dying, point blank, period. That's it. You're a human. Speak up. Use your influence. You all have influence. Use it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes -- Madam Clerk, is that the last public comment?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar. Items 7A through 7I for approval. We have received a staff memorandum for item 7D6 submitting a missing exhibit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Does any member of the council wish to recuse themselves from an item on the agenda? Seeing none, I have no request to pull any items for separate consideration tonight. I just want to recognize the members of the Downtown Business Association and downtown businesses for being here this evening. And with that, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Hearings, item 9A.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself, make your statements succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first, that is, those that are against the text amendment changes to Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17. Then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation, those that support the text amendment changes to Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly, enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Title 17 amendments. First reading of text amendments to the Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17 by adding, deleting, and amending various chapters primarily related to residential zoning and mixed-use zoning to address evolving community needs, enhancing housing options, and providing compatibility with the city's long-term development goals in support of the Bakersfield General Plan Comprehensive Update, specifically the housing element.
You're being disruptive. You need to stop right now. You are disrupting the meeting. If you do not stop right now, officers, we are going to take a recess. Please clear the chambers.
Is there a presentation that needs to be turned on? Madam Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight's only public hearing is concerning the text amendments to the Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17. The update's necessary for three separate reasons: to address the council referral that was received to update the zoning ordinance, to comply with the state housing law, and for housing element certification. Council referral came to us to complete the adoption of the comprehensive update of the residential zoning ordinance, sufficient to provide full compliance with state law. Thought I was cursed there for a minute. The second reason is to comply with state legislation. I use this graphic just as an example, in that that's all the housing bills that were proposed by the state of California during the 2022 legislative session. And of those, and of those, the highlighted in blue were the laws that were adopted by the state and signed by the governor. That's just one year in the last eight years that encompassed our fifth cycle, and there's just a lot of housing law that we need to address within our zoning ordinance. Lastly, is for housing element certification. When we first sat down with HCD some time ago now, they identified the residential zoning ordinance as the number-one constraint to housing in the city, and we noted to them that we were working on addressing that and were anxious to demonstrate to HCD as part of our housing element certification that we have adjusted our ordinance to be more streamlined, more development-friendly, and provide more byright opportunities for housing development in the city. That housing element challenges us to build 4,783 units annually, which is no small -- no small task at hand. And although the city itself doesn't build anything, the zoning ordinance provides for opportunities for developers to come in and build those units. In terms of the adoption process, this has been an ongoing process for some time now, about a year and a half. The referral originally came into the planning -- from Planning and Development Committee in September of 2022. From that, we had three separate workshops with the Planning and Development Committee itself, prepared the ordinance at stakeholder workshops, and that draft of the ordinance went to the Planning Commission just two short weeks ago. Tonight, introduction of the ordinance, second reading, hopefully, on March 13th. What does the ordinance changes do? There's a consolidation of the residential zoning chapters into a single chapter. You'll find some examples of what the ordinance looks like, that there's a reliance upon the utilization of tables as opposed to long lists. There's a removal of zones. Let's remember that the current general plan and the housing element relies upon a joint housing -- a joint general plan between the county of Kern, and so consequently, we have land use -- land uses within our land use zones within our current ordinance that are really akin to rural residential types of development. Those are being paired from the zoning ordinance. There's new zones to provide for compliance with state law, and there's residential parking requirements that have been removed. That is topical. And objective development standards were added, consistent with state law. The zones are broken down as from RS, or residential suburban, at zero to two units, and they run through R1, two to seven, our typical single-family residential zoning. R2 envisions a small lot, single-family residential at seven to 13 units. R3 would be your typical apartment complex types of densities. R4 and R5 are there because in order for the city to count as part of our vacant sites inventory land as low-income or very low-income, for low-income, there must be a minimum density of 20, and for very low-income, there must be a minimum density of 30 dwelling units. R6 is visionary of the high-speed rail station, where hopefully, one day, we can envision transit-oriented development. And the residential holdings is, in order to develop those lands that may not be quite ready for residential development now, but in the future, the residential holding zone requires that a general plan amendment and rezon be entertained at time that development is desired. You can see a look at the residential -- the table -- tabular makeup of those uses, the nice tabular use schedule that allows for people to maneuver through what's permitted, the various use schedule, all in one table. schedule, all in one table. The sidebar on the right-hand side of the table provides for tie-ins to state law and in some cases directs people for additional direction from within Title 17. There are new purpose statements included in the ordinance to provide written examples of what would be permitted within the zones. And the development standards of the individual zones is also arranged in a tabular format. There are two new mixed-use zones, the MX1 Zone or Neighborhood Mixed Use and the MX2 Zone. These are recommendations that come to us wherein we should entertain mixed-use opportunities to provide for additional housing. We have lots of underutilized main transportation corridors today that one time were maybe our primary commercial corridors that today may have vacant or underutilized properties. The MX Zone allows for the C1 and C2 use schedules to remain in place, but also provides for residential uses in a byright way, hence the mixed-use title. There are objective development standards that utilize a point system to provide for amenity within apartment complexes in multifamily settings, and the point totals are based on the total number of units, provides for equity in residential development throughout. There is not any... These are more design-based and not architecturally-based development standards. They don't provide for any architectural requirements. They're mostly about site design, entirely about site design per the Planning and Development Committee as a good place to start. Some additional revisions in terms of updated definitions, tabular formatting, bringing the residential component into a similar look and feel. There's a 10-acre requirement for PUD zones. Mindful that with the reduced development standards that would allow for density, in the past to build anything beyond or smaller than a 4,500 square feet, you'd be faced with a rezon into a PUD zone. Consequently, we're hopeful that we have more streamlined processes. And to entertain a PUD type of development really should be something that's of a larger nature. There's a removal of single-family from our downtown CC Zone. There's a removal of residential uses. We'll talk about comments that have been received from the commission along those lines. We rely upon state law with our accessory dwelling unit, much like density bonuses. Our density bonus law points the reader to state law. And so whenever that's changed, and it's changed regularly in the last few years, you've had to go and update your own regular ordinance. This allows us to rely on state law with accessory dwelling unit ordinance that sees a lot of changes almost annually right now since it's so topical. Parking considerations, as I noted, there's a proposal to remove minimum parking requirements from the ordinance. I use the example of leading as opposed to following in my planning department, Planning Commission conversation. It would seem that that's probably where the state is going. If you look at AB 2097, there's no requirements within a half-mile of a quality transit line. Or AB 2244, where there are no parking requirements allowed when housing is constructed in conjunction with a religious institution. There's been some confusion that the ordinance impeded any, providing any parking, but that's not the case. Relying upon the market to drive the bus as it relates to minimum parking. And so that's been proposed by the Planning and Development Committee and is inclusive to this proposal. I've got to say, it's the first time in my life where a developer was opposed to not being regulated. My wife said it was the end of days. And I, never in 20 years. Some commissioners, some commissioner comments, there was opposition to minimum parking requirements not being within the residential ordinance. At least two commissioners had reservations about residential zones not having parking. There was some dialogue about the C1 and C2 zones exclusively for commercial and not allowing residential. I would only note that we created an MX1 Zone that has C1 uses as a byright or the same exact use schedule as a C1 Zone as well as C2 Zones. And the exclusion of housing from just the C1 and C2 Zone because they would be the only two zones that exclude residential development is more inclined to try and protect some commercial properties from incursion of housing within them. It's almost like if I was to allow residential development at any one of a number of opportunities, be it CUP or otherwise, you would have no commercial zones that are dedicated to commercial uses, no commercial zones dedicated solely to commercial uses. And we felt that there may be a negative downside to that. You might look at it in terms of if I've allowed all commercial zones to have residential, why am I not allowing all residential zones to have commercial? Because we will have no real zones protected just for commercial development. As part of public testimony, there was a suggestion to overlap zoning densities. I did some research as to whether that's something that's entertained, and I found no zoning ordinances within the several ordinances that I pulled from surrounding or municipalities about our size. I didn't find a single example where zoning densities were overlapping. I would also note, too, that the R4 must be at 20 dwelling units an acre or more, and the R5 must be at 30 dwelling units or more for the state of California to recognize those zones as providing for low and very low-income housing. So the city's currently not in compliance with state housing law. I'm going to knock on wood, I haven't got a nasty Graham letter from HCD as we continue to work hard towards bringing them an adoptable housing element. We provided them one draft, and we're currently working through the review of the edits from our consultant for the second draft, which we would like to submit in a fairly timely way. We've been without housing element certification now for these last two months, and we'd like to make headway in having an adopted housing element that provides for certification with state law. The zoning ordinance is really a necessity for compliance and adoption because the ordinances with, the zones within it, and the various laws that are brought into compliance by it are almost mandatory for a consideration of support from HCD. State law's addressed there. So the housing element, vacant sites rezoned relies on it. Tomorrow night, we'll take our first round of those rezones to the Planning Commission for hopefully a supportive resolution to council. The annexations that are going to be moving forward to LAFCO, they rely on these own districts being in place because those annexation areas have been pre-zoned consistent with this ordinance. The housing element, as I noted, relies upon it. And so adoption makes all those puzzle pieces fit into place. The staff concludes the recommended amendments to Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code are appropriate and consistent with Planning and Development Committee direction. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend first reading of the ordinance approving text amendments to Bakersfield Municipal Code Title 17. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Mr. Clegg, do you have anything further to add before we open?
Thank you, Mayor. No.
All right, thank you. Mr. Maxwell, you're welcome to listen from out there, and we'll call one at a time. At this time, item 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Okay. Jess Frederick, WCI, I have some written...
You're welcome to...
Thank you, Mayor. Go. Madam Mayor and council members, I'll be brief. The action before you came as a surprise to many business owners that I've spoken to. We received perfunctory notice concerning a proposed change in zoning to alter our common parking area from parking to mixed-use. We sought advice from our partners and commercial development contacts, only to find that such action would devalue commercial property, potentially affecting loan covenants. We scrambled to wrap our heads around this matter in terms of the first proposed project, only to find that the final action taken by the Planning Commission had no relationship to the SEQA document, the analysis which we considered to be inadequate in the first place. Instead of making a... Instead, they were making a blanket alteration to commercially zoned properties as opposed to just simply shifting parking to mixed-use. We can do better, and for the broader community. A first reading, we believe, is premature. Instead, we respectfully ask that this be returned to planning for additional clarification of the project, additional study to address community impacts. Communities such as Westchester will be very, very strongly affected, and I saw no real consideration given there. And in conversation with most of those people, they had no clue what was coming at them. And we also need more time to adequately understand this as a public, and the review and input, I think, can make this a better zoning change. Our formal comments, I've already given them to you, are in writing, and we're providing them to the Planning Department. I plan to be at tomorrow's meeting to present them. And we reserve the right to expand the formal comments that we've submitted as additional information regarding this action is brought to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Mr. Frederick, at this time, if you could leave, and then we'll have the next person. If there's anybody else, officers, or anybody in the lobby who wants to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? We're having them come in. Well, they'll come in one at a time. And just wait for the next speaker. Mr. Maxwell, are you here to speak in opposition?
And don't worry.
Welcome.
I'll give Jess the things that he left here.
Thank you.
I'm speaking in opposition of something that is, to me, a, I don't know, atomic bomb on a small problem. This is not going to make my neighborhood any better than what it already is. We are the stepsister to just about everything. We got that city serve going on that nobody's happy about. It got sprung on us. I have talked to some of the property owners in that area, that they're afraid their parking lots are going to get turned into multi-use. They'll lose all of the control that we used to have. I just, I can't see that this council wants to put themselves in a position where your ability to determine what happens in this city is thrown out the window because you have to, quote, "comply." Figure another way of complying. Put it on the outskirts of town, put it in other areas. But don't take this neighborhood and one more time kick us in the teeth. We're tired of it. We're really tired of it. And, you know, I haven't been in on some of the presentations that have gone on in the Planning Commission at this point. I have been given a lot of documentation from the people who have been there. As you know, I probably talked to an awful lot of people in the community because they depend on me to take that information and inform the rest of the community about it because a lot of people listen to my program. And the number-one thing they tell me when they tell me, "Well, I love your program. I love it when you talk about what's going on in this city, the local stuff." And stuff like this just doesn't look good. It just doesn't look good. It's like you guys are not using your brains to think of other ways of trying to comply or basically just telling the state, "We're not going to comply, so take us to court." You know, if more of the cities would tell the legislature that, maybe you'd get some traction. But this is not a good idea. This just isn't a good idea at all. Leave the neighborhoods that have been established for a long time alone. We've been beat up over in the north side of 24th Street, the Westchester area, enough already. And now you want to beat us up some more? Allow all those parking lots to get turned into multi-use with no control over exactly what happens to them? You'll have people who are looking at it with dollar signs in their eyes and turn it into anything they want. They'll tell you one thing, and the next thing you know, they're turning it into something completely different. How do you stop them? And we've already experienced that with some of the things that, in the road structures we put in. That which we were promised is not going to come to fruition. I can guarantee you that 24th Street is still going to be a parking lot in the morning and in the afternoon because when you look at it, when you look at it on the map, the central corridor is not going to help them whatsoever. Let's do it smart this time. Let's just do it smart. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, I did. I did open the public hearing.
If I could just note, yes, that I stepped out, but I believe for the record, the public hearing was opened approximately 15 minutes ago. And remember, it's not 15 minutes, Madam City Clerk, for each speaker. It's 15 minutes total. So we, by my calculation, should be down to under 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Go ahead. Are you in opposition? All right. Let's just make sure there's nobody else in opposition. If you could just check on that. We'll just let our assistant city manager make sure. Mr. Thayer, we're going to have to just have one person in here at a time. We will call you, definitely. If you just wait... Oh, opposition. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, and then we're going to ask you just to step out for right now. We'll call you right back.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
Members of the council, my name is Scott Thayer, Senior Vice President, Castle &amp; Cook. I'm really here to talk about one segment of the... What was this discussed? And that's the parking. I'm here today to express my concern with staff's recommendation to eliminate residential parking. While I condemn staff for thinking outside the box to help provide more affordable housing, which would certainly cut down housing costs, I can't help imagine the challenges it would create if there aren't any alternatives for residents and their guests to park, such as ample street parking, parking lots, and our parking garages or structures. Was a parking demand study done that showed the effects this policy would have 10, 20, 30 years from now? And if so, what were the negative externalities associated with such policy, and how are they addressed? This parking policy may show little effect in the short run, but will likely become a burden to nearby properties when more projects are added without providing onsite or offsite parking. I hope we don't enact a parking policy today without having a plan to address the future parking needs of those projects approved under the proposed parking policy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thayer. Is there anybody else in the lobby who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition? Mr. Andrews, is there anybody else out there? Are you here to speak in opposition? Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. David Demahowski, Home Builders Association of Kern County. Actually, we don't oppose the ordinance overall. There's many features of it that we support, particularly the broad mix of product types and densities that are contained in the zoning ordinance. But we do have a pretty specific concern about wholesale elimination of parking standards in the residential districts. We think that may be ill-advised in a suburban development setting. We don't have a position on downtown. You know, parking reductions are probably favorable in that setting. But a little bit out of breath from all the excitement here tonight. But anyway, the feedback we've received from a number of our apartment builder colleagues in the community is that they're seeing an increase in occupants per dwelling unit and actually an increase in number of vehicles per dwelling unit. And so you have to be real careful about eliminating parking altogether, because it could force, in the situation where a developer opts to not provide adequate parking, there's no real onsite... Sorry.
It's okay. It's been a challenging evening. Go ahead. Just take your time.
I'm just a little bit out of sorts here because of all the excitement. If a developer opts to reduce the parking well below the expected demand or simply miscalculates, it forces the underparked units onto street parking. And when you have more and more small lots built into your zoning code, there's less parking space available on the streets, so it kind of compounds the problem. And again, in a suburban setting, we're not taking a strong position on what happens downtown or in other areas of the community where you might designate pretty intensive urban uses. So I guess what our preference would be, just in a nutshell, would be to consider suburban parking standards on a case-by-case basis. And where parking can be accommodated offsite, you know, deal with it on a case-by-case basis. So again, that would be our input from the Home Builders Association. So that's all I can say tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Demahowski. Thank you. And Mr. Andrews, are you aware of anybody else who wants to speak in opposition?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. And now, is there anybody who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation that would be in favor? So if you could just let them in one at a time, please. Give her one minute. Shall we set the clock? To 15. There we go. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Go and City Council. My name is Blaine Neptune. I'm with Matt Contoson Associates. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed amendment to Title 17 of the municipal code. I stood up here at the Planning Commission on February 15th in support of the amendment, specifically as it relates to residential zoning. The new ordinance will allow developers to process and develop housing tracks with smaller lots. The current zoning ordinance has a 6,000-square-foot lot minimum and down to 4,500 square feet in a special R1-4.5 zone. Over my 35-year career, the construction, the cost to develop lots has gone along with the construction cost index. And prior to COVID, a typical 6,000-to-8,000-square-foot lot cost around $40,000 to $50,000 to develop. Since February of 2020, according to a report from the Associated Building Contractors, residential construction costs have risen as high as 40%. This means that the same lot costs $70,000 to $80,000 to develop right now. The increase gets passed on to the cost of the new homes. The only way to combat these increased costs is to make lots smaller and spread those costs out over more lots. Prior to the new ordinance, to accomplish this, we would have to rezone lots to R3 and do a PUD overlay. This required numerous hearings and modifications for setbacks and other items. This new ordinance will give the developers the ability to develop smaller lots and keep Bakersfield housing affordable. Now, in regard to the ordinance regarding parking, on February 22nd, an article on the front page of the Bakersfield Californian titled "Developers May Get Relief From the City's Residential Parking Rules," I was quoted and insinuated that the proposed parking changes would keep housing affordable. I was referring to the lot sizes when I stood up in front of the Planning Commission. While I can support, in the core area, no parking requirements, in the downtown core area, when it's close to mass transit or public transit, I do not support the no parking for more suburban areas where public transportation is not present. I have several multifamily projects going out in the suburbs and in the rural areas and think that parking is required there. Residents need cars to transportation, to get them to work and to other places. If no parking is required, that might spill over into the residential communities. So thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Neptune. Mr. Andrews, if you can just get the next speaker, if anybody wishes to speak in favor or in support. Can we just have one at a time, please? Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you.
And you might lower the mic a little, please.
Mayor Go, members of the Bakersfield City Council staff. No audience today. But thank you for this opportunity to allowing me to speak in favor of the amendments to Title 17 that the City of Bakersfield Planning Department and Community Development have proposed over to your entity. Myself, I've been a planner for over 40 years in the Kern County area. I also had the pleasure and honor of serving as chairman for the Kern County Housing Authority for over 30 years as its chairman. Our goal is to create better planning projects for our community here in Bakersfield and for the residents. Times are changing, you know? The times that we have where everybody said the minimum we needed were 6,000 to 8,000, 10,000 square-foot lots. There's a shortage of housing, not only here in Kern County, but throughout the state. And we found that there is a need to make the lot sizes much smaller there. We've also identified that we need much more housing, and that's being forced on us by the state. And I've worked with staff for almost a year, committed with ideas that would really streamline the planning process and make changes to our commercial and our residential zones to make it easier to have viable housing developments here in town. I think staff has done an outstanding job in trying to figure out how to best shape housing applications, planning applications, that will be coming before the Planning Department and before your city council. So I really feel that the amendments, the text amendments that the city staff has made and are presenting to you today are valid. I think they make a lot of sense. And as a longtime planner, I really do support the changes that are being presented to you today. So it is my hope that your city council would approve the amendments that staff is recommending to Title 17. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thayer. Mr. Andrews, if you could get the next speaker who wishes to speak in support or favor? Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Alex Mora with the Moore Partners. I just want, you know, here in full support of the enhancements made to the ordinance, the housing element. And, you know, I know this would just create bigger, more economic opportunity for everyone. I know for myself personally, I almost got a project denied because I was liking one parking spot in a multifamily project in the city. And it wasn't even for the residents. It was for visitors. And so we had plenty of parking, you know, per unit, but because of this one ordinance, you know, we always had a project denied. So I can personally attest to that. It definitely will help and keep our development goals moving along. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Mr. Andrews, if there's anyone else out there, you can just check again. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in support? That's all. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in rebuttal, in opposition? Mr. Andrews, if you could go out there and just make sure there's nobody who wishes to speak to rebut in opposition? And while you're out there, you can ask whether there's anybody who wishes to rebut in favor. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. At this point, I don't... Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the Planning and Development Committee, we've seen this a few times, and I want to thank staff for all the hard work and hopefully HCD likes it also. But yes, changes, more density, R1, simpler. I guess I want to address the parking issues. We did talk about it extensively also at Planning and Development. From what I'm hearing, it seems that people think that, you know, we are going to require that they cannot put parking in. That is not the case, as Mr. Boyle stated. They can put all the parking in they want in suburban developments. And I am somewhat surprised, like Mr. Boyle, that developers and builders want more regulation, not less. We want affordable housing, and developers know who their market is. I spoke with Steven Pels the other day at the ribbon cutting, and affordable housing, 40 units, and he had to put in, you know, parking spots for all of them. He said, you know, "I'm not going to have, you know, maybe five people driving cars here," but he was required to put in the parking. And every project that he's built for affordable housing, he's had to do that. There are lots of examples where the developer knows his clientele and can save money and cut regulation. And I'm inclined to trust the free market. I don't believe anybody's going to go out in suburbia and build 100 units with no parking and expect to rent the units. It's just, they're not going to spend $25 million and not provide parking where their customers need parking. So we want to move forward with more affordable housing. I thought of the example of, right now, our standards are, if you have a three-bedroom apartment, it requires three parking stalls. So if you have a single mom and she's got a couple kids, she's paying for those three stalls if she's renting that apartment. And if we want to make it more affordable, we need to make it, size it right, I guess. So I am in favor, and I will make the motion for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I've thought about this a lot. I didn't have a lot of time to think about it because it was just given to us Friday. But in doing my own research and talking to several different people, many people that I reached out to, I'm looking at a bigger picture with this thing than what I think some are. I've really taken to heart what is happening in our state legislature and how the push for high-density populations and unrealistic expectations are affecting our housing element approval overall. The California Department of Housing and Community Development has once again dictated to our local government as to how we are going to plan our community and hold us hostage by holding their funding from us if we don't comply. In drawing up this new housing element, the state has imposed unrealistic goals on us. A goal of producing 36,641 dwelling units in our city at an average of 4,700, whatever that was, a year until we accomplish this. There are some of us that entirely understand that this is an unrealistic goal. Why is it unrealistic? Because it's impossible with all the state regulations, talking about regulations, place of solar, sprinklers, high permit fees, the rising cost of materials and labor, that it will not pencil out for a builder to make a return on their investment. So, and then with my colleague, Councilmember Bob Smith, what he just said, that even scared me more, because then we could end up with builders coming in, that it's just the bottom line, they don't care about the city, and they would put in multi-unit housing that could affect the city negatively. But there's other ways, that this is not a real great idea either, of where are those funds going to come from to provide this affordable housing that the state is opposing on us? Where are they going to come from? If the builders aren't going to come in, where are they going to come from? Well, LA has a great example of this with their affordable housing policy for their homeless population that came at a low price tag of $800,000 per unit in 2022 with a total of $1.2 billion budgeted, and it didn't make dent in their problem. So guess who paid for it? The taxpayer at a tune of $800,000 per unit. To me, that's socialism at its finest. So the last paragraph in our administrative report that we received, selling this recommendation under council goals, sums up the real reason behind these amendments. As part of the safety and resilience goal, completing the residential zoning code update is high priority objective to pursue action plan for ending homelessness. And then also, to provide full compliance with state law is a high priority objective to neighborhood vitality. Well, after reading through this amendment summary, obviously, these own changes are more in favor of high-density neighborhoods all over this town rather than what I would rather see, are developments that will attract large companies to relocate here, that will offer good-paying jobs and support our economy with their tax dollars. That's what I would like to see. One of my constituents brought to my attention... One of my constituents brought to my attention in talking about this in the last few days, that creating high-density areas all over our city will promote and create a living situation that has people too close to one another, where neighbors and people groups will become frustrated with one another, leading to more challenges in our city, as in parking. Because they don't have a parking space, somebody took their parking space and so forth. Those are all things that can come from high-density planning. People need their own space, and they're leaving big cities, a lot of them, for this very reason, because they don't want to be in a place where it's high-density. Bakersfield has been a refuge and a city of open spaces. It's invited every group of people here, because we have some room to move. So, I thought his comments were worth considering. I thought it was a very interesting perspective. So, removing parking restrictions, like I said, is a great example of creating this kind of chaos. And this amendment reads, "Parking. Parking standards are no longer required for residential construction." Period. I mean, that was the first sentence. And then, speaking of parking, there's talk of a compromise that no parking standards would only pertain to downtown. Some business owners are very concerned of what an impact this would have on their businesses. The city was not committed to making sure that parking was available. I understand that concern as a business owner and would want to see the results of the parking study that's been in the works for over a year before we commit to no parking restrictions downtown policy. I feel that we've gotten the cart before the horse again, and common sense is eluding us if we don't even know how we're going to take care of these people and our businesses downtown before we vote on this amendment. So, in conclusion, I find this is a very complicated and involved amendment that staff has spent a lot of time on, which I appreciate. But it's come before us tonight for a vote, and I do not believe that the council, at this time, has, and we've heard that from our speakers tonight too, to review this document properly. For me, passing it and then reading it after it's passed, for me, is not an option. So, I would like to make a motion for this to come back to the council within the next two months. I know that, excuse me, my throat's getting dry, that time is of the essence. I know we can't wait six months, we've got to get this thing done. But I would rather come back to it where we can ask some questions. I talked to the only person on the dais that has done any type of planning and development, our colleague, Councilmember Freeman, and I said, "Bruce, I'm reading this stuff. This is very complicated. I'm trying to figure out all the zoning. If I could just get more clarity on R1, 2, 3, because I'm reading through some of that stuff, and it's very troublesome to me that I'm not even sure if we really have R1 zoning left in our city." So, there's questions like that that I want to be able to ask, and I think, and I've talked to some of my other colleagues too, and they really don't understand all of it. So, we're in a position that I think if we could just take the time to, because this is a big deal, that's probably going to last way beyond my life, that could affect our city way beyond my life. I think it would be prudent for us to be able to do so, instead of just trying to push this through quickly. So, I'd like to make a motion for this to come back to the council within a given time that staff feels is appropriate, after we've had a workshop and have an opportunity to review and ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman.
Don't know where to begin. I agree with Councilmember Gray, I agree with Councilmember Smith. On the one hand, and I've been developing for 33 years, and have built tens of thousands of units, including multifamily, and I agree, no good developer, intelligent developer, would go out and build 100 units and not, in the suburbs, and not put any parking in, because we wouldn't be able to rent them. So, you know, I said, "good developer." I also spent a lot of time down in Southern California, driving around, I would say, almost every single city there in the greater basin. And most of them were developed before they had parking standards. And so, the multifamily was built with no parking, and it's a total disaster for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of square miles. Apartments are all parking up and down the streets. People live in the apartments, drive block after block after block at night, trying to find a parking place. It is a total disaster, which is why all the laws were created to require onsite parking for apartments in the first place. So, those were suburbs then. I'm totally against this in what we'll call the suburbs. And I've had 100% negative feedback on the idea that you would go into the middle of, you know, my war down on whatever, Old River Road, build a big apartment, have no parking. And I don't think a good developer would do it. But I have lived long enough to know there are bad developers. There are people who try to cut corners. You can't guarantee there won't ever be a bad developer someplace. So, I don't really like to open up that window. I'm also a little concerned with some of the SEQA arguments raised tonight. I don't know, takes a SEQA attorney to know if those are legitimate. I don't want to get sued on this thing. I would like more time for people like Councilmember Gray to fully understand the zoning. I think Mr. Doyle did a very good job, and the committee did a good job, many hours, in creating the zoning to facilitate the possibility to build these units, which I think was our responsibility. We can't guarantee they'll be built, because in California, the costs are too high to build. You can't build anything, you know? So, they're not going to get built, okay? We should know that. But the law says he has to create the zoning to facilitate this formulaic thing, and he's abided by the law, he's done a very good job of it. So, my compliments for that. I'm just hung up on parking, and I'm not really hung up in if we called it a downtown zone. And someone better than me needs to define the downtown zone. I don't want it to include Westchester. I don't want all those people to have everything in front of their houses with thousands of cars out of a bar, that's coming every night. So, I'm not sure what the downtown zone is, but I would like to see us facilitate in a downtown core urban zone, the ability to have no parking, commensurate with either the developer showing there is plenty of parking around, a study or something, or that, and I would like to see the city commit to building parking structures downtown, because we need people to leave downtown to revive the businesses, and without more parking structures, we're not going to have them. We're just not going to have them. And major cities all have these parking structures. The ones even referenced in the text all have massive parking structures in their downtowns. We need parking structures for people who don't have it onsite. So, there's more, I just think there's a little more thinking to be done on this. What I would really like to see is all of us address these issues, make some compromises with each other, and for once, get a 7-0 vote where the council agreed on something, and we could all learn to work together, and each of us give a little bit, and come up with a good policy that we didn't always have to have a 4-3 vote, or a 3-4 vote, split down the middle. I don't think the community likes that. I don't think we're doing a good job of our job when we do that. I'd really like to just take a little more time and see if we can work out some bugs in each of us, compromise a little, and get everybody in agreement on a good policy. And I'm mainly talking about the parking. I think the rest of this is in pretty good shape. So, for that reason, I'll be supporting Councilmember Gray's motion, just to give us the time to work out some bugs here, and I really hope reach some consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I've been asked just for a little break, so if we can just hold for one minute.
Sure.
If anybody else would like to do that, you're welcome. Reconvening at 7:07. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor. One, as I wanted to echo Councilmember Bob Smith's comments, and having seen this in the Planning and Development Subcommittee quite a few times, I wanted to congratulate Chris Boyle, Paul Johnson, and team on a very impressive housing element. As a student of city planning, you often read through housing elements, and it's exciting to know that a student somewhere will read this housing element someday and be very impressed with some of the things that we'll be able to accomplish. I will say that I think two things can be true at once. You know, housing, in terms of housing, the burden to develop is very much real. We do need to lower the cost of build, and we do need more complete transit systems. I don't think, they're not isolated, the two go hand in hand. But people must have somewhere to live first, and in order to do that, we need to kind of decrease the burden in order to build. And I agree, I think, you know, as we rely so much on the market, we let the market decide in terms of parking requirements. I think in having no minimum, and having a no minimum parking requirement, as Councilmember Smith said, a lot of the times, that's assumed as being that no parking will be developed. And that's not the case, and there are many, many cities within California that serve as case studies. San Jose is one. And if we look at kind of demographically and geographically, San Jose, even, you know, being a city of urban sprawl, really mirrors kind of the scenes that we'll see here in Bakersfield, and serves as a good case study that has removed parking requirements for anyone who needs to do further research on that. So, I would encourage others to look at other cities as precedent studies. As someone who represents one of the southernmost districts that is arguably urban sprawl, however, a suburb of the urban core, however you want to kind of identify it, I'm concerned, one, housing is obviously a concern, but as we see so much rapid development, I'm also taking into account that so much of Ward 7 is just a large parking lot. And when we think about living in a city as extremely hot as Bakersfield, I'm thinking about the heat island effect that comes with just having surface parking lots across the city. And not to mention the socioeconomic burden of the heat island effect that falls on different communities. And I know a lot of the conversations have been about the urban core, but that housing diversity should kind of span across the city as well. I trust the free market. I think less regulation, less burden does save money for developers. This is not just my own personal opinion. This is proven time after time for cities across the nation that have removed parking minimums. And ending parking requirements actually, you know, it actually decreases the involvement in government, it decreases government's involvement in development. The government cannot actually dictate the quantity and location of the parking that you then develop. That is the exact definition of having no parking minimums. So, instead, you kind of trust the developers, you trust the markets, to determine how much parking will be necessary. And they can be creative with this. This can be a parking garage, this can be a parking garage that's, you know, that's located a little bit further than the housing development, no matter if it's an apartment or if it's homes. It also allows you to get more creative with what you're developing. You can have townhomes, you can have cottages, garden apartments, all of these. you can have cottages, garden apartments. All of these things then become a reality and can be a reality, whereas right now, we kind of see the same kind of housing stock, but you can't really diversify the housing type until you can remove some of these parking And I think, you know, bottom line, it is, you know, it's who we're designing for. And I'll take the very specific example of those who don't need cars, senior citizens. If we are trying to develop housing for senior citizens who don't drive, who either have maybe one individual who drives, who have, you know, in some senior centers, there's one person who drives a multitude of people, you know, we are also preventing the development of housing for, for that population base, very much in need of housing. We know so many of our houseless neighbors and residents of the city are senior citizens, are veterans. So if we're, we're serving a certain population base who, who may not even need a vehicle, can we now develop housing for those without this parking minimum? And then my last point that I'd like to make is that, you know, there's this point of folks who are leaving California, and at the root of that is that it's, you know, it's too expensive for families to afford to live here. It's just too expensive to live anywhere. It's too, people are even leaving Bakersfield because it's expensive. But the reason is also because there are so many burdens to build housing. So this is a step in, in the direction of removing some of those barriers. It's, it's a different, it's a completely different issue if folks need to spend more time researching what a no minimum parking requirement means, and, and positive case studies that have come from it. And I'm sure that our staff would be happy to provide those. That's an entirely separate issue, but to be like completely against parking minimums, I don't want it to become like an ideological issue. It's actually, it's a barrier, and it hinders us from building housing for people in dire need. And I would just encourage us to think of those who are a little bit more vulnerable citizens in our, in our resident, in our, in our city. For example, senior citizens, building affordable housing for senior citizens who, who actually don't need a vehicle. So close with that example and, and return.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. I don't see any other requests to speak at this point, so you have a motion. Oh, okay. Councilmember Arias.
I am 0 for 3 tonight. I'm trying to make comments.
If you hit it twice, I think it cancels it.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots to digest here, but just a couple of questions for staff. I know we've generally talked about the importance of passing the housing element. Can you probably tell me for the time, what those deadlines look like, and how fast does this body need to move to come into compliance with state regulation?
Thank you for your question. As I noted in a presentation, the city fell out of compliance by not certifying a housing element and approving the housing element here from your DAS and having that housing element certified by the state. So at present, we're 60 days in without certification. We've made one application to the state and taken one round of comments back. You may or may not have seen the multitude of pages of comments that have come from various stakeholders, and we've been, been altering the current draft to be reflective of, or be at least responsive to those comments. In terms of timing, because I don't have a certified element right now, timing is of the essence. We've been working very hard to bring our second draft to bear, and I just got an email today from my consultant where they will be returning the draft back to staff for our review and additional comments, and they want those comments back by next Friday, which is a lift. But we're preparing to, to put all hands on deck to provide those comments. Some of those comments, staff has been anticipative of being able to highlight some of our progress in creating a, just creating a zoning ordinance that provides for all types of housing types to be built in the city at, at varying densities. And we've, we've worked very hard in trying to find property owners who would embrace varying densities across the board. And I'd like to be able to highlight those efforts within this draft housing element because it's, I think it's something that is anticipative of the State Department of Housing and Community Development, that we are making progress along those lines. That said, you know, I, I have a zoning ordinance hearing tomorrow that relies upon this, or, pardon me, a zoning, a rezoning effort tomorrow in a special session of the Planning Commission that relies upon these zoning districts as our first effort in creating our vacant sites inventory. We do not have zones currently that will satisfy the requirements of the state in terms of providing those minimum densities that I noted. So I guess it, if you ask me for a timeline, that, you know, the timeline is in, in real time. It's now. I, I'm hearing that the, the council and the committee specifically embraces the majority of the ordinance, and that the major problem here is a dialogue, additional dialogue as it relates to minimum parking standards. And in light of my sense of urgency in, in completing that second draft and getting that to the state and being able to highlight the efforts of, of the city to provide for 65% of the housing requirements in this, in the county of Kern, per our current regional housing needs assessment. I don't want to make recommendations to council, but it might seem prudent that perhaps we, we take action on all but the parking, and staff will work hard to bring a, a workshop to the council that then you might be able to all vet more fully. But it's important. It's certainly an important matter within, within the Development Services Department to be responsive to the deadlines of the State Department of Housing and Community Development and work uber diligently towards the adoption and certification of our housing elements. We, we have not received any communication from the state of California that would lead towards a decertification of, of the city. And, and that's a tribute to, I believe, HCD seeing us as making every effort to certify a new housing element. And I don't want to send any message to Sacramento that says anything other than that. And that would close my comments.
Great. Answered questions one through three on my note sheet, so, well done. So does that mean that we have reason to believe that HCD will approve the rest of this plan, should we remove and table for further discussion the parking elements of this plan?
Thank you for your second question. I, I can't speak for HCD. I can speak for the efforts of our consultant and staff, that we will prepare our second effort, and we will resubmit. And it's our hope that the comments that come back from HCD as it relates to our second submittal will be minimal, and that will be only a short timeframe for staff to make the necessary corrections that we would hope would be largely textual and, and less content-based, such that the city could then certify its six-cycle housing element and move forward with implementation of that with purpose.
I think the research is very clear academically and in practice, that a reduction in parking requirements does a whole host of good for the community. It streamlines development, it makes development cheaper, which increases our housing supply. It encourages active modes of transportation, which is not only good for people, but also good for the environment. It densifies urban cores and, and cities. I think it's, it's pretty clear that this long-term should be the direction that the city of Bakersfield heads. And I'm a huge fan of cutting red tape to make it easier for us to produce that type of development as a city, but I'm not in favor of getting rid of local control. And I think that's, that's the hard pill for me to swallow tonight. Not in favor of giving up our local control to the federal government, the state government, and also certainly not our developers. While I recognize that most developers are good players and good actors, we cannot make the assumption that all developers are going to be good and also include appropriate amounts of, of parking. So with that, I think I would like to make a third motion, that we move forward with approving all of the rest of this plan and tabling for discussion at a later time, some of the parking modifications that staff is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak, so we will take Councilmember Arias's motion. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion was approved with Councilmembers Ari, I'm sorry, Weir and Smith and Vice Mayor Gonzalez voting no.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
10A Reports Budget Presentation by the Youth Commission, $7,500 for fiscal year 2425.
Thank you. And I know Council, Assistant Manager Andrews is getting them. It looked like he was going to get them one at a time. Commissioners, thank you very much for your service. Thank you for being here. And the first speaker, go ahead. Okay, there's a presentation, City Clerk. Can we get that up?
Okay. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. One of the last times that I was here speaking to you guys was to request funding for the Bakersfield Youth Commission. And Vice Mayor Gonzalez, you requested that we would come back with a budget proposal within 90 days to present to the council, and we are here to deliver. A few of my commission colleagues and I are here to present that budget proposal to you this evening, and I want to thank our full commission for all of the hard work that they've put in, in making this possible. Our role as youth commissioners is to create an annual project that is aimed directly at empowering the youth of our city and informing our peers about the issues that impact us. Unfortunately, we have had no funding of our own, which has left us to collaborate with local nonprofits to join onto pre-existing projects. And while we would say that those projects have been successful and have helped the youth of our town, we believe that we can make a much more substantial impact if we have a budget to carry out our projects. With the budget proposal that we are bringing to you this evening, we will be using funds to enhance the already standing commitment to create a project, to enhance and improve the youth of Bakersfield. We are extraordinarily grateful for everything that you all do and for the hard work and time that our city staff has put in to make this happen, and we hope that you can take our budget into consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Beardsley. My name is Hrjessel Brar. I'm a senior at Stockdale High School, and I am currently the mayor's appointee to the Youth Commission and am the chair. So I just wanted to cover some of the history of the Youth Commission for you guys. So the Youth Commission was created in 2016 as a 16-member commission. We're still, we still exist like that, with two members from each district and two appointed by the mayor. Each of us serve a two-year term with a possible one-year extension. There's one main member and one alternate member who fills in for the main member in the case that they're absent. We generally meet every fourth Monday of the month at around 4:30. The goal of the Youth Commission is to create a yearly project which kind of empowers the youth or helps the youth in some way, or addresses some sort of problem that faces them, as Commissioner Beardsley just mentioned. And we've done that in the past with several projects. So I just wanted to introduce some of them that we've done for you. So last year, we created a project where we would collect school supplies for children living in motels. The year before, we collected supplies for our children who are living in hotels as well, with the help of the Assistance League. And the year before that, we did an anti-vapine campaign, which was aired on the news and targeted specifically to teenagers. And this year, we're creating a project which is, which is an extracurriculars fair that will go along with the Give Big at the Current event, so that way students can find extracurriculars that they really care about, and they can do some more things outside of school. So with that, thank you, and I'll pass it off, pass it off to Commissioner Terango to continue and give more details about our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brar. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Natalie Terango. I'm a senior at Golden Valley High School, and I represent Ward 1 on the Bakersfield Youth Commission. And I'm going to introduce the budget proposal. Unfortunately, we don't have slides, but I would like to start by saying that this is an estimated budget based on past projects and our current project to potentially use in the future. This budget proposal is also based on planning and events similar to the ones we have done in the past. To get this budget, we did thorough research by finding budgets of two comparable cities, San Francisco and Honolulu, who have youth commissions and that put on funded events. We also researched past budgets from the Kern Community Foundation's event, Give Big Kern, Give Big Kern at the Park, which we plan on collaborating with this year. To begin, the facility permit and usage fees, which is around $1,000, covers the rent of the park and to make sure that all permits needed for the event are paid for. For this event, specific tables and chairs are needed for the invited organizations to have booths for our extracurricular fair, and to be able to put out flyers or resources for the youth, and that would be about $500. The supplies, we have a supplies and materials category, which applies to anything that can be used as decorations, markers, flyers, tablecloths for the tables, balloons, up to a balloon machine, anything that we would need to make our event more entertaining and appealing to the youth. These are things that we could also reuse for the future, and we put around $1,500 for this category. With this budget, we would also like to get shirts. We calculated the total number of people on the Youth Commission and the staff by the cost of a shirt, and it roughly comes out to $750. And the shirts would be used at the event so that people can easily pinpoint one of us, and we would be able to help them. They would also make us look more professional, well-established. So thank you, and I'll pass it on to Commissioner Bath, who will continue with the budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Gurnur Bath, and I'm representative of Ward 7. So, so continuing on with our budget proposal, we are looking at banners for a price of roughly $250. And these would be used to guide attendees to different booths in the events that we could be planning in the future. could be planning in the future and also to acknowledge the Youth Commission and that we are holding the events. So maybe like something that says like the Youth Commission on it. And then furthermore, we would also be spending on pop-ups and photo backdrops of an estimated $500. And these will be used to create more of an interactive environment at our events and also to like make like our attendees like more comfortable at the event, you know, so they can take photos, you know, and have memories for the future as well. And then continuing on, we have a budget of about $2,500 or like an estimate of $2,500 for vendors and entertainment rentals, which is not, which includes but isn't limited to DJ services, inflatables, and even food rental, food vendors as well. And I mean, that would also vary by which type of event we are planning to do, so that would like have some variation of what we would look into for entertainment. Also, depending on what type of event we have, we would also be wanting to hand out some prizes at our events, which we have an estimated $500 for that. And these prizes that we are looking at could be candy, branded pens, pencils, and other swag. And now I would like to present the grand total, which is $7,500. And thank you for all your consideration, and we are now willing to take in questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. It's been a delight to watch you in action and just see the projects that our youth have come up with year after year. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, for your presentation and for being with us this evening and for doing all this work. I appreciate it. You know, I firmly believe that when you challenge folks and you set a high goal, that people will meet your expectation and they'll reach for it, and certainly you have, and you've risen to the occasion tonight, so you should all be commended. And if you need a letter of recommendation, knock on my door. We're then happy to help you. Couple of questions for you, all right? How many students do you hope will attend this event? What is your expected goal here?
As I'm going to be resigning from the board next year for college, I'm going to leave that to Commissioner Beardsley to answer. Who will be here.
So we would like as many students as possible, of course. I think that what we were discussing is probably about 250 students coming out to this year's event. Yeah, about 250.
Okay. And what's the strategy to publicize this event to students?
So the strategy that we're hoping to use is...
Do raise your mic, please. Thank you.
I apologize. We would like to, of course, do media through the news and things like that, as well as publicize through city pages. We also, being that we're students, we want to really get connected within the schools and get it directly to students. I know that some of the best things that we've heard about come directly from our counselors' Canvas pages and things like that, so just connecting with students in the best way that we can see fit.
Okay. And then regarding supplies and materials, walk me through exactly what that line item is about once again. I know you did, but if you can just, in further detail, describe what specific supplies and materials.
So supplies and materials was basically anything that would be needed to make the event more, not more appealing, but like, for example, to put out flyers, if we want to put out flyers for the event or if we want to put out flyers for our own, like youth, the brand, the Youth Commission, that would have to come out of the budget. So we kind of made it into a big, into a big balance where it's both the, more of the entertainment aspect for the individual event, but also for the, basically anything that would allow us to put flyers out and like get the information out. In specific, we talked about tablecloths, which were kind of expensive for the tables. If we wanted like a Youth Commission, like, you know, fancy, it would obviously be more. We wanted it to be more like a balloon machine in specific because a lot of that stuff are like stuff we have to buy. And so it kind of all came together in the supplies and materials, which is stuff that we can reuse in future events as well.
Great. Thank you. Two more questions. One is if you can, if you can describe for the council what a successful event would look like.
So in terms of what we look at when we want a successful event, the biggest thing is, you know, bringing as many youth out there as possible from as wide of an array of schools in Bakersfield. That's why it's really helpful that we're from all over Bakersfield, because we pretty much all go to different schools. So we get a lot of students out there just generally through, you know, communicating through the Canvas pages, as a commissioner mentioned, but also through organizations for service such as like national honor societies, you know, Spanish honor societies, math honor societies, and everything of that sort. But beyond that, we really want to help kids in some way. So this year, for example, we want to connect them to extracurriculars, which is something that we've personally heard from other students, and we find ourselves as something that's hard to find, find information about extracurriculars to connect to. In the past, it's been about, you know, sharing information about the dangers of vaping, as well as just for collecting supplies for students. So we just want to have as big of an impact as possible and to involve as many youth as possible.
Okay, great. And then my last question, and this is maybe unfair to ask you tonight, but if you can come back with a response in a future meeting or perhaps after your next Youth Commission, is what council goal does this project align with? And so you might want to take a look at our council goals, unless Carter has a response.
I might get this wrong, but Innovative City or...
Innovative and Efficient Government.
Yes. And I would say that it aligns with that because this is a way to kind of get that youth perspective into it, and I would say that it's innovative to, you know, get a younger perspective of the people who are going to someday sit up on this dais before they're up there so that we can kind of, you know, make sure that those ideas are cycling through as it goes.
I love it. I'm super proud of all of you and all of your work and your responses to these questions. And so I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. To our youth commissioners, super proud of you all for, one, drafting a budget, presenting it with the utmost confidence, and I agree. I think it's such a strong suit of your group and your commission that you all come from different high schools, different parts of the city, and you really bring together different perspectives, different lived experiences. And I'm very excited to see the end product, the event, and can't wait to attend it with you all. So please let me know how I can help too, and I will be happy to help broadcast it with you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, very quickly, thank you for your service, and I applaud your initiative. I want to let you know that whatever you do a budget, especially something you haven't done before, you ought to put a contingency in. That's the only line missing in your budget. Something will go wrong. It always does. Something you'd anticipate, but something you really have to spend, not a nice tap, it's something you have to have. So I'm going to make a different motion. I'm going to motion that we approve your budget with the addition of a 5% contingency.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I support that motion. I think it's very good practice with budgeting to always have a backup fund to be able to account for any unforeseen circumstances, which often happens. So my other piece of feedback is that it is my hope that this is an ongoing contribution, but there are a lot of materials that you all will be spending with these dollars, and it's my hope that we save those resources for future commissions to come so that we don't have as much cost going out every single year. And I hope that I get an invitation. I would love to be there. And really, kudos to you, Carter. Really proud of your leadership on this and appreciate all the commissioners for coming and presenting this and putting this together. But let this be an example of what can happen when you approach the right folks. And, you know, some days you just get these crazy ideas, and you have these honest dialogues and conversations with the powers that be, and you're able to, you know, in some cases, maybe not move mountains in this particular instance, but you can create a change. So congratulations and looking forward to the event.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion, which is Councilmember Freeman's. We take the second one first before the first one, so that one is the one with the 5% contingency. Colleagues, please catch your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you very much, commissioners. We very much appreciate you and all the best. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor Statements.
Are those the same? Thank you. Go ahead and clear that, and then Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a referral tonight. As we are fully aware, 10 million illegal immigrants have entered our country in the last three years, and I'm very, very concerned of what we're seeing now at the California border, that our border is more open than ever. And I'm concerned that we are going to get an influx of those immigrants into our city. We're only five hours from San Diego. We've seen in the other cities in the United States where they've come in, it's been a huge burden on the budget. And so I'm very, I was thinking about this the other day, watching the news. Are we prepared for such an event if we have a huge group of people start coming, heading our way? And so I'd like to make a referral to staff. If you could report back to us if there's anything in the, are we prepared for this? And if so, how are we? Because it's not something that we've ever talked about, and I think we need to be able to be considering that scenario that spills over into Bakersfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Any other requests to speak? Seeing none. The meeting is adjourned at 7:44. Colleagues.